All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, March 8th, it is 7:01 PM. I'm calling this meeting for order. Roll call. Mr. O'Rourke is not here, Mr. Reed is not here, Mr. Rooney is not here. Here we Mike Pelk, John Formkella, Didi Martin is here, Donald Lynn Wales is here, Jason Mauer is here, Jessica Kuduska is here virtually, and Enan Lapelis is here via microphone. All right. Please note this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-2. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with this law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you are speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call vote, unless the vote is unanimous. Chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. All right, I do have a brief announcement for all of Town Council. Before that, we have public participation. To begin with, any member of the public who is here in council chambers would like to participate at this time. Mr. Kirsch, please step up their microphone. Please introduce yourself, name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Kirsch, 35, Applegate, L.A. For the record, I'm a member of the Board of Finance. However, my comments tonight are mine alone and do not represent the Board or any other individual member. Last week, I attended the Strategic Planning Committee meeting for their review of the proposed 2022-2023 capital plan. I found the meeting very informative and the information that was prepared ahead of the meeting very useful in understanding the items that were included in the proposed budget. However, I was also very surprised that the committee largely failed to have any strategic planning discussions. Except for a few questions on technology life cycles and the need to revisit the fire department's equipment replacement plan, there was nothing forward-looking. For example, there was no discussion about items in the capital plan for the years following this next fiscal year. Therefore, I would like to discuss one specific item. Capital project number DPW-2016-16, a bucket truck for DPW, an item that was first identified in the 2016-2017 approved town budget capital plan. In calendar year 2019, and again last year, I had issues with dead trees on town property which borders mine, and in both cases, the trees had to be taken down. In both cases, I had to wait several months for the town where it's contracted to do the work. Both situations also provided me the opportunity to speak with different professionals, including the town's tree warden. It is clear from those conversations that the bucket truck would improve town services. As I said, the need for the bucket truck was first identified in the 2016-2017 budget and the plans to purchase it in fiscal year 2018 for $245,000. In the 2017-2018 budget, it was pushed out to fiscal year 2019. In the 2018-2019 budget, it was pushed out to fiscal year 2020. In the 2018-2020 budget, it was pushed out to fiscal year 2022, and it remained there in the 2020-2021 budget. In the 2021-2022 budget, it was pushed out again to fiscal year 2023. Now, in the 2022-2023 proposed budget, it has been pushed out until fiscal year 2026. This means that we have been carrying this item for seven years, and we have delayed the planned purchase for eight years. By the way, the estimated cost is still listed at $245,000. Is this how we manage a plan? Is this item really needed? If it is needed, then there comes the time to move forward regardless of other needs or other purchases. I would suggest that you speak directly with the tree warden or other professional arborists to learn how this purchase could benefit the citizens of Monroe. I also believe that if the town council or its subcommittee is going to be responsible for a strategic capital plan, then now is the time to critically review items proposed for the out-years. That review should include an analysis of how long each item has been on the plan, as well as how the town has done in executing the prior approved plans. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Any other public participation from Town Council chambers? Going online, is there anyone that is here via phone, or via tablet, or smartphone, or computer, that would like to publicly participate at this time? Please remember to unmute yourself. Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation for the evening. All right. Item four, Budget Workshop. All right, so this was the announcement I wanted to make. As everyone knows, we will not be voting on anything this evening. Our deliberations and final vote on the budget will be on Monday, the 14th, as our deadline is the 15th to deliver to the Board of Finance. I would ask that any motions, written motions, be prepared and submitted to the Secretary of the First Electman by 12:00 PM on Thursday, March 10th, so that they be included with our regular meeting packet for delivery this weekend. Okay? I believe the First Electman's office will create a list and then kind of distribute. It'll be listed by council member so-and-so, and then council member so-and-so's motions will be listed underneath, and that list will be generated and provided in the packet over the weekend, okay? There'll also be, it'll be online as well. All right.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask?
Yes.
Does that mean that evening you would not entertain any motion from the floor?
No, any written motion. But what I would say is, I think, providing a written motion so that people can see it beforehand would probably allow Town Council to consider it a little bit more over the weekend. I think that...
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm thinking if something...
If something came up.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we'll entertain any motion from the floor on Monday, but I think it would help Town Council out to know what, any motions that anyone is considering at the time beforehand.
Sure.
All right. All right, so while we move to the main part of the evening, our department meetings. Our first department on this list is the Assessor's Office, which is Tab 18, page 90. I did not create a list of who wanted to see what department, but I am just, please, look if anyone has a question for the assessor. Just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, thank you, everybody, for being here, for coming in. Those of you who have gone through the budget with me before know that a lot of my questions from department to department are very similar, so while I talk with the assessor, chances are when it comes up to somebody else, there's going to be some form of similar question, dealing with just different expenses. For, thank you for coming. My questions lie on the office expense line here, that we are seeing an increase of $2,840, even though we've been under budget by approximately $4,000 every year. I do note that there is an adjustment of approximately $1,500 upward based off of what was asked individually on the line items.
Yep.
However, no other changes whatsoever. Is there, and a twofold question. One, is there anything within those office expense lines that you could purchase this year? Because it does seem like we're tracking well behind what is budgeted, that we could purchase it this year instead, and then possibly save some on next year's budgeted items? And even if the answer to that is no or yes, what do you think we could possibly take off this line item to be more in track with what our five-year average has been?
Well, so the answer is no. I think what's driving the, you know, the excess we've been seeing has been the education line. The last couple of years, Assessor School was canceled as a result of COVID, and then it was also modified to be a bit cheaper. It was held on Zoom exclusively, and the fees were much less, so that's really what's been keeping things down as well, is probably, you know, some of the meetings and seminars. There's just been less of that in the last couple of years. So that's really why we've been coming in under budget. I like the, the Assessor's Office is a bit dynamic. I never know what's going to pop up during the year. I need a little bit of flexibility, but I have two certified staff members, one including myself, some new hires coming in, and I think it's important that we have the flexibility to have the proper formal training, and as things normalize, be able to take advantage of those opportunities. It's not, per se, a specific purchase that we need.
Does it look like those trainings are making their way back to being a more regular...
Yes, I just got an email a couple of days ago that the Assessor School is going to be on this year as regularly scheduled, and, you know, life is just slowly but surely, you know, normalizing a little bit, so.
All right.
I anticipate that to be the case going forward.
That answers my questions, thank you.
Ms. Martin.
What's the cost of a, of a school? I mean, what's the...
So I felt the cost in for two people to go up to UConn. It's, you know, I'm figuring it's a week-long recertification, it's about $600 per person to stay, and then roughly the same amount for the actual class, counting the incidentals. So roughly $2,500.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for the Assessor's Office? Hearing none, I think you're all set, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
All right, Emergency Management, which is Tab 26, page 143. Budget starts at 145. All right. E-Management. What a question. Mr. Mauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, Chief.
Hello there.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Looks good on you.
That's it. I'm sure you will. It's on the operating expense line. I noticed that there's the batteries, which obviously are very important. That being said, we're tracking way under our expenses for the year as of right now. Training?
Cert training.
Okay.
But go ahead, Chief.
I was curious as to even with the training, we've come in under budget year after year on this expense. If the cert training even is, let me see what the amount allocated for.
It's just cut off.
I think so. Of course, that's the line that's cut off.
Yeah.
Do you know by any chance approximately how much of the cert training?
Depends on how many people actually want to participate. The more new members that want to join the cert program, the more expensive the training becomes. It's by person. Also, the training itself is by person, and so we usually provide a coffee-in type atmosphere.
Okay.
So that would also increase the quality.
Do you know what the per person is?
I do not know right now. We haven't actually been able to hold that class in sometime in person. State's been doing it online. I don't have the number, but right now, per person for the class.
So knowing that, as of year-to-date, you still have approximately $7,500 of your $7,600 in the budget, do you think there's any chance that those batteries could be purchased on this year's budget line?
A battery could be purchased probably with that amount of money, because I think the numbers you're talking about, the UASI radio program there, is the large number that you see. That is our allocation. It's basically a large radio warranty for the whole region. That is Monroe's portion of the radio project. The town that oversees the project is Stanford. They haven't sent the bills out.
Okay.
So we are still anticipating having to pay that in full before the year is complete, so that would eliminate all of that money, and that just leaves us with the $1,000 line, and we won't be able to purchase batteries with that. The batteries are quite expensive. They're for those trailers, if you've seen the VMS trailers?
Yes.
So the batteries are for. I've had custody of those for six years. They were old when I took them in. They don't hold a charge anymore, so when we put them out, they last a day or two, and then they're no good. We've got to bring it back here to actually plug them back in for a full day before we could reuse them again.
So your estimate is, if we weren't to move anything to this year, that you have about $1,000 by, come the end of the year?
Yes.
Surplus? Do you think that we could use that $1,000 towards anything that's budgeted for next year, that we could then maybe take $750 off of this line to just make a little bit of a dent?
We could purchase one of the four batteries with that, because per battery, it's $550 plus an extra $36 for the deposits on the lead, but we'd be able to purchase one of the batteries.
Okay. And if we did that, would it be, would you feel comfortable if we were to cut, like I said, like around that, based off those numbers you're giving, probably about $750 off of the operating expenses for next year? Or do you think that that would...
Off the line of the batteries, I would have no problem cutting that if we purchased one of the batteries.
Okay. Is that...
The other lines would probably stand as they are.
Okay. That answers my questions.
Anybody else?
Just a quick question. The new batteries, are they also the rechargeable ones?
Yeah, they would be recycled batteries that you actually plug back in. They actually work off solar too, but they're sold, the current ones, the sun's not charging them.
Sun's not strong enough.
So we've got to actually plug them in.
Try holding them up.
They're supposed to last out there for weeks, and they're lasting days if we're lucky.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? Emergency Management? Ken knows. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All, all right. Line by. Town Attorney. Come on down. This is Tab 5, page 46.
Round a little bit, Richard.
All right. Who had, who had questions?
That would be Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Jason.
All right. My question for you is actually a little bit different. I know we're tracking underneath, my guess, and you can correct me as I'm wrong, is that a large part of that has to do with that COVID was postponing items, and that, so we're losing, we're tracking a little under for that, as well as just a lighter year or things along those lines. My question is, with the 260, do we have any bigger items that have been postponed, that are postponed, that actually might make this too light of a budget? Because we have things that would have happened this year, but got, or the year before, but kind of got pushed because of COVID, that next year we might see a balloon?
I think you're right in the tracking, you know, based upon where we were, also largely based upon the way the billing structure was previous to that. So, you know, COVID did push a lot of things, but I do think the answer is, I think if the flat budget is appropriate for a number of reasons. One is, we're almost done with our tax appeals, which significantly impacted the time that I've been spending behalf of some, like I would say, non-regular legal issues. Those are almost done. We've done a really good job with those. But we do have a number of big projects coming up that I anticipate will probably replace the costs that were spent last year, or the expenses last year for tax appeals, are probably, so probably should be about a break-even proposition coming off of the tax appeal year. I would say if you ask me this question next year, I might have a different answer, depending on what projects are on the horizon or which ones were delayed. But I do think it's okay. I mean, I discussed it with Ken, obviously, and we talked about what was foreseeable, which is a scary term in the legal field, but I think, you know, most of the big items that come in, that are big ticket, that's a buddy covered by insurance, so we'll provide coverage for that. Some of the largest litigation matters. I don't anticipate anything else coming in other than some projects that we have on the horizon. So I hope that answers your question. I think it's hard to predict, but as far as fixed costs and what's predictable, I think we're going to be okay.
Sounds great. Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Martin?
Where do you see the bulk of this, Mr. Lido? Do you see it in the cost, and do you see it in labor? Is land use using more?
I, well, yeah, I guess, I guess the answer, land use is a wild card, because, you know, you're, you're being responsive more than anything else. So I'll defer to Ken on the labor and land use.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I mean, I would say that you've got, you know, we, for, I would say more routine, non-labor matters, the, are kind of, you know, we kind of look at a, you know, a similar dollar amount for, for that, those combined, both land use and kind of routine, what I'd say, kind of Frank, Frank stuff.
Frank's rate for non-legal matters?
I'm sorry?
Said, are we paying Frank's rate for non-legal matters?
What do you mean by non?
I don't know what you mean by that.
That was, I thought that was what you said for something about non-legal matters.
No, no, I said, you're paying about, we basically, in that number, that build, we consider about, there's an equal amount that would go towards labor, as well as to the routine matters of both, you know, the traditional town attorney stuff and land use matters. The remainder, there's another chunk that we kind of have as a, kind of, you know, unknown for litigation, right? Which we've talked about a couple of years ago. In terms of our current run rate, we're, I mean, most of the upside is in that latter bucket, where we just haven't, you know, thankfully, seen a tremendous issue there. I would say we're probably trending this year in a similar fashion. There have been some, there have been kind of some unusual things going on with, with labor, just with, you know, different things with contracts and, and various other things that we've been working on with the unions, so that's been a little bit up in a couple, last few months, but it's not, you know, it's not off the charts. And we're still tracking well, you know, we're tracking well in the current fiscal year. So, you know, I don't know that there's, I mean, there's always going to be, you know, so another good example, this year, we have more costs than we typically have for the various communication tower issues. ARX being the largest one, which is more of a one-time issue. As you know, we did get that offset by some of the fees that were being paid to us by ARX, so there was some offset to that, but that's like a one-off. So that is trending, you know, that's, wasn't fully anticipated, but again, on our land use side, we're doing, we're doing fairly, very well right now, so it's, it's more than covering that. So, you know, as Frank said, there's going to be a degree of uncertainty with any of this, because we don't know what's coming in, you don't know what matters are going to be before us, we don't know what claims might be made, so.
I think generally answered your question. Now I understand what you're asking. I think it's probably 50% general litigation, or general legal fees, like town attorney fees, and I think it's probably 50 to 60%, 40 to 50% on town attorney stuff, and then 50 to 60% depending on combined land use and labor. That would be my guess. I think that's how it typically has been, depending on the year.
For most or all of, for example, land use, do we use special attorney for that?
Yeah. I mean, almost. I mean, the, the routine in-house stuff, I'll handle, I'll see, but that's how it was before me coming on, so I think it's best not to disrupt that at the present time. A lot of those cases is...
And the same, the same for labor?
They're ongoing, labor's something, definitely.
I don't have any additional questions. I, I do have a comment. I was looking at Trumbull's budget. Trumbull is, for their attorney fees, and I will preface it as saying, I'm not absolutely sure, their budget, the credit to you, Mr. Cal, and the staff is not nearly as clear as ours to figure out. Couldn't exactly tell whether it includes special counsel, but theirs was just a little over $300,000 for a town that's twice as big as we are?
Not quite, but bigger, yeah, yeah.
Close, maybe. And they were 300, ours is 260. So hence, you know, my question is, is that, you know, the best use of the money?
I would argue...
Well, one thing I would say is, I believe their HR director is their labor attorney. So you've got HR salaries that are basically legal fees.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of that baked into their budget, number one. Number two is, I think, just from practicing, I don't know that the size of a municipality is so indicative of like a definite pro-rata difference with legal fees. I think, I mean, like a city compared to a small town, I think then that's a substantial change, but I think if you're talking, you know, just by population, I think there are a lot more factories that would go into that than just population alone, but I do think we're probably have similar needs to a town like Trumbull.
Right, but I mean, there would be more land use issues, for example, and everything in Trumbull than there would be here possibly.
Possibly.
Do more building and, you know, things like that. I, it just, it struck me the, how close those numbers were for a community that was somewhat bigger than ours then. Not exactly sure how much bigger, but, thank you, Mr. Lido.
You're quite welcome.
Anybody else? No. Thank you, Attorney Lido.
I'm released, thank you very much. See you all.
Good as well. That's right. Emergency Medical Services. Not to be confused with Emergency Management. Tab 26, 147. All right. Budget begins, 149. 157.
Hello, hello.
All right. Questions we have for the chief? Mr. Mauer?
Back to my regular questioning. Just looking at the office expense line on this one, and that we've been tracking, again, well, well under for, for a good number of years. I think I went back about six or seven years, and we've been tracking underneath the budgeted. Right now, we're at 380 on a $3,500 request, and last year, we finished at 1,500 on, on the same request, that it has stayed stagnant. Again, it's a two-part question of, one, is there anything that we could purchase this year on what would appear to be an apparent surplus that could save us money on the next year's budget? And depending on the answer to that, is there an amount here that you would feel comfortable cutting this back by that could just trim a little bit of something that seems to be a surplus year after year?
So I can address at least the last few years, I think I mentioned it last year. One, our part-time employee, we haven't had, and I have not filled that position yet. One, COVID had a major impact, and now, two, I don't have a workspace for a person, because we're, you know, in our trailer. So, but I have been working with the First Electman to redo the job description for that. That impacts the office supplies, of course, because I don't have somebody in the office. So go along with that, myself and Deputy Chief Rosenberg do a lot of stuff from home. Same reason, we have no space currently in the facility, so we've sort of taken some of those costs on ourselves, the paper and printer ink and the rest of the stuff. Once we move into the new facility and we refill that position, the office supplies will go back up again, because a lot of people in there are using it. We do plan on using some of this year's budget to start outfitting the new facility, so I will be using this budget, because we're going to have the needs to do that. As we move into the next fiscal year, again, you know, we are talking only 3,500, which when I talk toner for, you know, printers and paper and everything else that goes into that line, I don't see a lot of wiggle room, especially with the way costs are right now. I would be hesitant to cut that, just because of, you know, the way the costs are for that. So, you know, that's where we are, why we are where we are in the fiscal year.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Martin?
The contracted services, that included the ambulance?
No, the contracted services are, are paramedic, and all the expenses to go with the paramedic. Our contracted EMTs, that we have one EMT that's there with a medic 24/7. It includes the billing company's fee. It includes the billing company's fee, so they get a percentage of the income. As well as, there are limited times when we use an intercept paramedic from like AMR that comes up. If our medic is tied up and we have a second call, which we've had a lot of lately recently, they bill us for that response. So that covers that. So that's what covers the contracted services.
So we had talked recently about unusing a new ambulance service, right?
No, we had a conversation.
I would just.
During the.
I know.
I would be careful around executive session discussions.
Yeah, so we had a conversation last about the, the two primary drivers in this number, which was Valley EMS and a proposed direction, which we are moving forward with, based upon, you know, based upon my feedback. I think the, what I had mentioned at the time was that, you know, we, as it says in this budget, we anticipated an increase in this based upon the industry and where things are going. I think at, may not be, it probably will not be ready for the next council meeting, but perhaps the one after that, we probably will have a proposal to put forth, which will kind of solidify this. But I think for budgetary purposes, based upon what we're seeing in the industry, we would, I would look to provide to council a proposed adjustment to the contracted services line from what is already budgeted. It would be an incremental $25,000 to address the cost increases that we anticipate, pandemic-related increase in, in vendor costs. However, I would ask for a equal reduction in the Board of Finance contingency line because during the budget process, we did bill that into the contingency. So it would be, it would be neutral relative to the proposed budget, but it would put the funds where they will be needed in that contracted services line.
Okay, so, so we, you have made that request for the offset there.
Sorry, I.
So you have made the request then for Board of Finance to address that?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is when, when, when I put my proposed budget together, working with Don and Craig and, and finance, Ron and Heidi, when we, when I put together the Board of Finance contingency line, that number, that, there was some funds that were contemplated for this issue that weren't, we didn't have it flushed out yet at the point. So what I'm saying is we can simply reduce that line and increase this line and.
Okay, all right, I understand.
And I will, I'll be happy in a, in a, you know, to articulate a recommended motion to the chair and you pack it for that.
All right, I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, social services, senior center. Kim, come on up. Two tabs, 13 and 28. 6 and 172.
Can you start with senior center?
Is that 13 or 28?
13.
13.
66.
All right. Senior center, questions?
I actually found the answer to my question as I did a more in-depth review. So it was the change in the postage from one to the other.
We did have a.
Confused me a little bit, but eventually I found it and.
We spent a lot of time on that, I remember, really trying to figure out the postage issue. But thanks to Kim and Heidi, they got it figured out.
So, so my, my question for first senior center was answered through that research.
Because of the being over budget in one, yeah, it's a clerical error that we're trying to track.
Yep, and, but now that I did some research on it, it makes sense. And I, hopefully the way that you've done it now, it will fix that problem in the future budget. So I'm okay.
All right. Anybody else for tab 13, senior center?
Just a quick question, the, well, the 22, 300 and the, what's been moved to capital?
I'm sorry, which one?
Are you talking about the painting of the building?
Oh, the 22,300, yeah, that, that I removed out of the operating expense because it's covered in the capital reserve recommendation, which we went over last week, so.
Anything else for senior center?
So we're, we definitely want to continue the project. It's just not in this line.
Did I say 28?
I don't have any questions on that tab.
No, no. For social services?
I didn't ask for social services.
Oh, I think he did. I thought you did. Jessica, anything? No? Okay.
Okay. All right.
All right, Kim, have a great night.
Love you.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, come on down. Tab 27.
All right, here we go.
Oh, man.
All right, uh, budget starts, what page we got?
156.
All right, uh, who wants to ask a question? Jason, why don't you go first?
Sure.
Start down the line.
The good news is my question is deal with, should we be spending more money? Not, should we be cutting anything here? And it's something that we've talked about a few years in a row now of the paving and maintaining of roads. Of is there room for doing more in the next year? As, as we see expenses and costs continue year after year to go up, up, up. And as we've talked in previous years, I don't know that I've ever seen the cost to pave go down from one year to the next. Do we have any room, not, not only just in our budget, but also in our bandwidth, to pave at a faster pace at a cost? Because I understand that means more labor, more overtime. So at a cost that is beneficial to us in the long run for, to do it now and upfront, rather than the increased costs of parts and labor, materials and labor in future years? Do we have the bandwidth and is it fiscally responsible to do so if we do have that bandwidth?
So within our bandwidth, we are performing to an extremely aggressive extent within our own staff. We are, we purchased the excavator that clearly allows us that ability and that kind of reduced cost and gives us the ability to excel at what we're doing. However, if we were to continue that trend and look to do more in-house, I don't have enough staff to supplement a contractor. So we would have to revisit a contractor coming in, which would therefore just, from a fiscal sense, be far beyond what we're currently doing right now. So the, the cost would, would be far beyond our expectations at this point. It wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense at this point.
And likely be beyond what it would be in future, like if.
Yes.
If we did both this next year's and the years after this year, it would cost us more than it would cost to do half and then half?
Correct, especially this year, current, a component of all of our paving to add into that is the escalation. So there's a petroleum base to asphalt. So right now with the geopolitical market, the way it is and the way the market is, we're, we're accounting for that in our current road plan. I think at this point, that wouldn't be a venture we'd want to look into. There's additional costs built in right now going off and trying to produce and do more just for the way the trend is right now, unfortunately.
That makes perfect sense. The only, the only request I have with that line item then is if you notice that trend start to change or our bandwidth, for whatever reason, open up to be able to accomplish more, please do not hesitate, in my opinion, to come and talk to us about doing more to save money in the long run. Because I, it's, it's one of those line items where if we have the ability to do it at a lower cost now over the course of many years, it probably saves us money when we can do it within our bandwidth. So, or in future budgets, please keep that in mind as well. The other question I have is a request for next year's budget because there's no way to get this answer for this year's budget. But I'm curious if both Public Works as well as the Selectmen could look into over the next year, the costs for the town to contract garbage removal for, for its citizens? And whether the tax increase that would be associated with that would be less than what people are paying individually to contract their own garbage service? I think that's something that if the town could provide it by contracting one single service for the entire town and could save people a little bit of money each year that way, even though the tax increase would be slight, their, their actual costs would be down because they wouldn't be paying for garbage removal. And so if that's something we could look into over the course of the next year, I think that's something to look into.
I'm happy to do the research. I know that we, we actually discussed this several years ago and kind of did a back of the envelope. And there was no, you know, it wasn't like, oh my gosh, this is like, you know, a no-brainer kind of thing. There was, there was a lot to it. And it didn't seem like there was a tremendous, you know, offset way or the other. But, I mean, I'm happy to dust it off. I mean, the markets change and, you know, who knows?
It's something that's been brought up to me a couple of times of, hey, why don't we get our trash picked up when such and such town does? And so I figured might as well, like I said, there's no way it could be done for this budget season, but if it's a project that we can look into, might as well get the information on it.
We can refresh the, maybe research a little bit deeper next time and.
Wonderful. That answers all of my questions for you.
Thank you. Anything else for Department of Public Works, Ms. Martin?
What about the dump, the bucket truck?
For tree work?
Yes.
So currently, right now, we, we are in the process of replacing our tree warden. So refocusing on that. What we would need to have that person build out a better kind of listing of all of the trees and the priorities, what we've received back was minimal. We'd love to have a bucket truck, but again, to, back to Jason's point about the paving, it's a bandwidth. That would be a staffing issue at that point. So as we look forward to try to better our services, we've offset that with an increase in the tree line itself this year. So we can look forward to that in the future. But at the moment, right now, we're, we're supplementing, we're going to have the new tree warden and we can proceed forward and be in a good position. I did hear what, sorry.
No, go ahead. I was going to.
I, I did hear some comments, so there are things we want to do to improve that kind of function within the department itself. So at the moment, we're not in a position to fully staff up and go for the bucket. That's why I got pushed out.
The, the tree ward, the prior tree warden or sting, I think is, I don't know, right? There was no inventory there?
Minimal from what it was. We were fairly aggressive through the service requests that we have received. But involved in that, in, in the time in which was spent park ranger and tree warden, just because we do get the service requests as well, there needs to be the function of that position driving the roads, inspecting and doing more. So we hope to broaden the bandwidth of the individual, being part of how, how we develop that out. We intend to improve on, on that kind of history.
And if I could just be clear, you know, with all due respect to the former tree warden, he might've had tremendous knowledge in tree work, but he's not a public works professional. I look to this man to tell me, how can you staff a bucket truck? What kind of training is required? What kind of insurance is required? And we have a contractor that can do, we can get a bucket truck if we need one. And, you know, that, that particular purchase was prioritized by your Director of Public Works in terms of the relative priority. So yes, it has been moved out over years, but that was a conscious decision because it was not a priority relative to other things that were a much higher priority. Because we have alternate ways to do the same work and it's not at an extravagant cost. So we are getting the work done and, you know, I think, you know, you, you need to look at the bigger picture, not, not just, you know. I, I mean, I think a lot of people think, you know, one piece of a vehicle like this is going to have a, you know, overnight dramatic increase in how much work we can do, and that's not the case. I mean, could it be strategic or tact, probably more tactical in a certain areas, maybe? But grand scheme of things, it's, it's just, it's not, it's not the priority of the other things that are capital plan.
Okay, thank you. I have another question for you. What didn't you get in this budget that you wanted?
Hmm, that's a good question. I mean, we, we'd love to, in conjunction with all the other departments, be able to get everything that we want, right? This could be responsible. I mean, we're in a good position. I would have liked to have two trucks, but we were, veiled ourselves the ability to put a body on one of our trucks, which was laid out in the capital. So at the end of the day, we did get what we requested. We went through an extensive priority, prioritization process. And there are multiple factors, whether it be staffing, whether it be the, the actual purchase itself and looking at all the other items. I'm very comfortable with, with what we've received in the budget. I've, I've been here, we've spoken to each other for many years. We're, we're in, we're in good shape, and I thank you for that. Getting the things we need and doing, doing what we can with the body of our services, so. I really don't, there's not one thing that I'm screaming about. Thank you very much. It's, it's worth it. So we had, I'm just, nothing in particular. We've been able to offset it.
You told me you wanted an increase in your office expenses, though.
I did, I did. I was prepared for them too, figuring I got some bids going out that would actually chill the remainder.
I actually had a note on your line item for office expense that the difference is due to reallocation looks good to me.
Right, that's perfect. I know how much we.
I'm just teasing, Jason.
You knew I looked at it.
Can you switch from BIC pens to Stop &amp; Shop?
Sir, we actually take it from the finance.
The finance department, does that mean you need how much of an increase on your office expense?
I mean, Ferrari's coming in. Anybody else? DPW. That's it, Chris?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I just ask a couple of questions of the first selectman.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. First Selectman, there were just a couple of items at our last meeting that I had asked if you could take a quick look at. And I was running if you were able to do so with the finance department. One was just what the increase in the capital reserve, if you could just walk us through that a little bit?
Sure. So, I mean, I kind of touched upon that in my, my presentation. I mean, that is primarily being driven by the proposed project scope and development reserve fund. But there also are a lot, a larger collection of smaller projects, which I argue we prefer to not bond for, that we are instead including in the operating. I mean, it's, it's hidden in the operating account, but it's under capital reserve, right? So that's why you see that line item up higher than it's been in the past.
Okay.
But it's primarily being driven by the 250,000 in the project scope and development. And again, the other stuff is just a collection of those smaller projects that, you know, again, not one, not only is it, I think, better to address those smaller items when we can by not bonding and, and kind of putting on the town's credit card is, is beneficial for obvious reasons. It also allows us to execute on those smaller projects right away because if, you know, once the budget's passed, we can start working on that July 1st as opposed to going through the, you know, obviously you're well aware of the procedural aspects of a bond issuance, which that authorization takes some time, so.
The next one was on the intergovernmental town.
Jason, column two of the, of the capital budget, pages 200 and 201 actually give you all the detail for the reserve appropriation. And it actually, the, the, at the bottom, back to the.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought, thank you for highlighting that, Ron.
The next question was on the intergovernmental town on the revenue budget summary, page 19. Obviously, a very large increase there. I'm guessing a lot of that has to do with relief funds.
It is, it is the ARPA funds.
Okay. And the side question that goes along with that is the fact that we are factoring something like this into our budget this year obviously makes a very large impact for the, for lowering the overall effect of the costs in the budget. Are we at all worried about, once these funds aren't there for us, there suddenly being a ballooned increase in the taxes and an exponential, an exponential increase in taxes for future years?
Well, I certainly am not, you know, I'm not going to support an exponential increase in taxes. I think that, you know, obviously, it's something that we have to pay a very close attention to. There, you know, you, you know, if we, if we hadn't utilized these funds in this way, I feel like we're not, it's not going to the benefit of the taxpayers, which it should, right? So, so I would argue it's necessary there. We do have an extremely healthy fund balance as well. And we had talked about, I mean, if you go back to the very beginning of this pandemic, we talked about needing to utilize our fund balance to smooth this, smooth things out, right? So the good news is every time, you know, we've looked at it, we haven't really had to go there. And if anything else, we've been building it up, right? So yes, when these funds go away, there's going to be a hole to fill. But I would hope that, you know, between, you know, the, the very, you know, thoughtful budget that we've been doing to keep costs contained, along with being able to look at, you know, if we, you know, I would not, I would not be opposed to, in the outer years, you know, if we, if we needed to apply some fund balance to basically taper that off, that reliance on it so that we don't have huge spikes in, in taxes, I would, I would look into that. You know, the, the, it's, sorry, I lost my train of thought there. The, I was, I don't know what I was saying. So I, I had this other thought and I just lost it. Oh, I know what it was. The, you know, the other thing that I'm, I'm hopeful is that, you know, we've had a couple of years of, you know, with the Board of Ed needing a much higher increase in their operating budget than we've seen in several years. And I know a lot of that is because of enrollment issues and things like that. And I'm hopeful that as that starts to stabilize as well, we won't have those pressures in some of the outer years, and that'll help give us some, some relief there as well. Because that's, you know, most of the, as you know, I mean, in this budget, most of the increases are attributable on the Board of Ed's side, so.
And you actually dovetailed directly into the next question, which you mentioned that we do have a very healthy fund balance right now. And anybody who's paid attention to my questions over previous years knows that I'm not always a huge proponent of using our fund balance because it's there for a reason. That being said, we are actually above the Board of Finance proposed range. Do you think it prudent to possibly utilize any additional fund balance this year to ease the tax burden on the average taxpayer or due to the fact that we are going to have to taper things off in the future and likely have to use that going forward to kind of counteract this? Is it good to be over that threshold?
I mean, my feeling is that as, you know, that we wanted to utilize, and this was kind of in line with the Board of Finance's philosophy at the time as well, when we were looking at using, utilizing a fund balance to mitigate the effects of the pandemic. You know, the pandemic didn't hit just one budget cycle, right? It's been prolonged. And because of things like this grant, anything else, we've been, and tax revenue coming in fine that one year, we've been, we've been fortunate. But I think, you know, my, my philosophy would be as we, as we emerge out of this pandemic, as the economy starts to stabilize, as things can get back to normal, I would want to have a measured, you know, conservative use of fund balance available to the town when it, you know, when it may potentially be needed. And I'd rather, you know, again, I'd rather, as you said, because, you know, the other function of this is, you know, if you don't, you know, we only have a certain amount of time to apply the ARPA funds anyway, right? So kind of get it over with.
There's no question of that using it right now, that those funds right now is the correct, is the correct call. That is 100% just fact. The, my concern lies in the future years then.
Believe me, I, I, I'm well aware of the fact that, you know, this is, it's very helpful this year, but it's going to leave a, you know, it's going to leave a hole that we're going to have to address next year. Absolutely. But I think we have a, you know, I think, you know, you can't predict all the, all the things that can change from year to year, but I mean, in that regard, I think we have a plan. I know I've, I don't know if I, I don't know if we discussed it at a Board of Finance meeting, but I know I at least had a conversation with the chairman, Manjos, over that and kind of what my, my thought process was. And I think, you know, I'm sure we'll, I, I am sure we'll discuss this with Board of Finance because we go through revenue quite a bit in those meetings, so.
And then the final question just deals with our capital and our bonding for the next year in that we had discussed in the joint meeting that Board of Finance might have an appetite to increase bonding a little bit for this because of the fact that we've had so many things roll off
Right.
without putting things on through the pandemic. Do you know if Chairman Manjos or the Board of Finance has given any kind of guidance on what their appetite would be? Or do you have any view on that?
I, I don't, I know that, I think, Ron, you had looked at what was rolling off and it was around $5 million. So we're, we're a little bit under that right now, I think, right? On the bonding column, if I, if I recall. That said, I mean, you know, there are, what's that, Ron?
I think it's just shy of that, yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, 4.3. So I think, you know, I, how do I say? I mean, there, I know that there are some other potential, there are some other potential projects that we've, we've talked about that could develop, that we can't really contemplate at this point because they're unknowns. So, you know, potentially having some opportunity there. And, you know, I mean, the, the thing about bonding, as we've always said, is that unlike the operating budget, I mean, you can, we're not limited, right? So anytime during the year, a bonding, we can add something to a capital budget at a bonding that would go through the normal process. So if we find that it makes sense based upon what's going on in the, in the world and interest rates, everything else, I mean, is, we can always address that. We're not, we're not limited to, to the way we would on things that are being funded out of the operating expense. That makes sense.
It, it does. As, as we are keeping our eye on that, are there any particular, let's say, 2020, because one would think 2023, 2024 would be the next level of priority to the 2022, 2023. And I could be wrong, but that's, that's what the logic would say to me. Are there any projects in there that we should be looking at as like the top priority to move into this year if we?
I mean, there are a couple of, I mean, you're, you're all aware of the municipal space deassessment plan and that's at, and I think there are some projects that are included within, you know, or contemplated, I should say, within that plan. That would be probably the immediate priorities. And related to that, I mean, there's, there's a few moving parts to that. There's some contemplated renovations or possibly an expansion of the senior center that would be part of that. There is the, there was the possibility of, you know, there's some other kind of one-off things with like the highway garage and that kind of thing. But I would, I would say those things are probably the ones that I would, I would probably prioritize first. You know, that said, you know, one of the other things that we're actively trying to get our arms around is what we'll be able to do relative to these, these federal infrastructure dollars, right? I think a lot of them are going to go towards transportation-related projects. So I don't know that we'll be able to say, hey, we could, you know, pick off a building project, right? Like the renovations at the Shelton Firehouse, that'd be another one that, it's already going down the pike, right? I would love it if those could be, you know, applied to that, but we just don't know yet. So those are kind of like a little, somewhat unknown. So those would have to probably be in the bonding bucket unless we got grant or funds to do it otherwise.
That answers all of my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have another sneak question coming in. What's going on?
Well, I just have a few little housekeeping ones. I had had a Park and Rec question before, and Missy addressed that last night at the Park and Rec.
Great.
It was about, I didn't see much of an increase in their part-time salary, but that was reflected in the cost of the minimum wage. So that was.
Spent a lot of time, and again, my thanks to Heidi, she did a lot of work with part-time salaries because it's always a, it's always a challenge. There's a lot of moving parts in that.
Yeah, it, it's something, I mean, you know, the part-time salary plan was, I worked hard on, and I hate to see us fall behind that. But that was with Park and Rec.
I don't think we are, and I give, you know, again, credit to Missy. We're, we're trying to take a fresh look at that. With the minimum wage going where it is, I think, you know, there's an opportunity to simplify that whole, that whole part, and that's the direction she's, she's going in.
Right, right. And she did a good job explaining it last night. Library.
Yes.
How many part-time people in library?
Currently, 26. I don't remember the exact number. Again, I mean, it's hard to, so with the library, there is, you know, there's, there's an allocation of funds for part-time staff. Over the years, I know, and the prior library director has, through attrition, not replaced people, but replaced hours by reallocating hours to existing staff. So, you know, I almost, I almost cringe when I look at just a raw number of part-time people in, in a, in a budget as large, you know, in a collection as large as a library because that one person could be working eight hours, they could be working 20 hours, right? You don't know, right? So, you know, it'd probably be better if they were in FT, you know, expressed in a, in FTE normalization.
Well, in, in talking to some of the library people, they were saying like there were people that worked two, three hours or something like that. Not volunteers, but, you know, in the part-time thing. And the, I know, I know part-time is, you know, certain amount of hours and then you don't have, they don't have benefits. But at some point, or maybe, you know, with the library board for them to look at, we've, we've got the director, but she has no help underneath her. And a concern, I mean, no, yes, she, yes.
She has a adult librarian, a children's librarian, a reference, yeah, she's got.
In all the part-time people, it's, there's no expertise in the staff. Lovely people, hardworking, but you don't have somebody with a library science degree or something like that.
I think there are other, I think there's other people on staff that have an MLS. I think a lot of the reference people have an MLS.
Right, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, they are thinking that. All right, well, that was, it was still something I, I wanted to look at, just, I mean, if you, if you took out a bunch of part-time people, could you then hire a full-time assistant?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, and I've, you know, I've told the library director, those are things that are, you know, happy to, you know, those things can be explored. At the end of the day, it's whatever, you know, the dollars are the same, right? So the challenge is, you know, can you, can you still staff it the way you want to staff it and get the functions done you want done? But, yeah, that's, that's possible. But I, I know that, you know, I think, you know, Nicole is, the new director is still, you know, she's putting a lot of, you know, thought into getting her arms around the operation and taking a fresh look at things and, oh, there she is, she's on, I know she was on there. Hi, Nicole, I didn't realize you were even on. So I think, you know, I think she's taken, and she's, she's had some ideas of, of, you know, maybe I want to take this and maybe I want more focus on a person for Makerspace and less on this and all that. So those are all good conversations to have, and I think, you know, we can keep having them, you know?
I'm all in favor of that. Last question, I think. Economic development.
Yes.
I didn't, we didn't ask for them to come in.
Right.
But last year, I think it was $6,000, is it? That we.
Video for the.
I'm sorry?
For what?
The video?
Yeah, $6,000 for a public relations video and.
That was several years ago. That was, it wasn't.
It wasn't, I thought last year they got.
That was done under the prior chairwoman of EDC when it was.
A while ago.
A while ago.
We saw it maybe a couple of years ago. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does seem like it wasn't that long ago.
Things are blurring together.
No, certainly wasn't.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't last year during COVID, I don't think.
No, it wasn't.
Pre-COVID, it was before COVID for sure. Definitely before COVID. Yeah.
That's it?
I did have one other thing I wanted to bring up. There is, gosh, I don't even know what page it is, the water distribution system.
Not the water wheel?
Not the water wheel. That is. Thank you. Page 138. So those that may not be familiar with this, so the town does, town does, nothing's for free. The town does pay for water lines and fire hydrants throughout the town. And these are the, these are the charges. It's kind of a formula. This was one that I noted in my presentation that we had not yet gotten our new rate information from Aquarion at the time. We have since gotten that. It is a small adjustment, which would be just under $10,000, $9,932. And again, that is well within what we were, including in Board of Finance contingency for that unknown. So I would just offer that, I would offer that again in my comments to the chair in terms of motions to consider, I would include that in my, in my communication to you at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Increase water distribution system by that and take it out of the Board of Finance contingency line.
Were those the only two?
Those two, the only other one, and I believe Heidi handed it out, it is not actually a, it's not a dollars issue, but there was a oversight on page 181 for the library. And it, again, it's not a dollars issue, it was the hourly rate, which I think was pulling from the wrong, older, an older section. So the page that Heidi handed out today is the corrected version, properly shows the blended hourly rates for those positions and, but again, the dollars are the same.
And it was one other.
What's that?
There was a slight Seamer's adjustment.
Oh, you know what? I don't.
The rate just, it was slightly high, it came in slightly higher than.
Okay, I don't think I have that.
Yeah.
Number yet. So what, do you have the number?
Right in the $7,600 range.
Okay, okay. So this is in fact, the police pension line, so I can get that for you as well. Believe me, in that line, that's not that.
That's not.
That's a big line. So, yeah, so for the Seamer's line, that, that's been a moving target. Well, there's a few things. It's variable because it's based on salary, right? So that, because that changes, Seamer's changes. But then several years back, the state decided to change their investment return percentage assumptions and get them more close to what they should be, quite frankly. And that, of course, had a impact in the required contributions to keep up with it. So the percentage of contribution keeps increasing on the employer's side. So the percentage of contribution keeps increasing on the employer's side. So the increase was slightly more than we had than what was originally projected when they gave us those numbers.
Mr. Chair?
One moment. So, Mr. First Selectman, you'll, you'll have all those changes for us for the packet?
Yes, I will have Seamer's, EMS, water distribution. You have the new library page, but I'll, I'll include that as well just so that you have it as a complete package of changes that are, that I'm suggesting. Yes.
And we'll have a final number as presented on Monday. Seen head, thumbs up, perfect. That's what I'm looking for. Jason?
I was just going, a question to the chair. For those, for those adjustments, will you take care of getting those motions on to the calendar? So that, or should?
Oh, you mean the First Selectman's adjustments?
Yeah.
Likely there will be a motion on the table that includes, incorporates those changes.
Thank you.
In our final, we typically do it by final number, so that's what we'll have for that. That'll be in a final number motion.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. With that being said.
See, is there anybody on the, I don't know whether Jess had any questions?
Do you have anything, Jess?
No, all my questions were answered, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:13 AM. I will see everyone. Thank you.